All right, we should be good to go.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. It's February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, and it's actually, my computer is telling me random money. We all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, unafraid, under government, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, there is no changes to the agenda. Oh, yeah, we do roll call. I'm out of order. All right, roll call.
Commissioner Harpy. Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Nafis. Commissioner Pescarelli. Chairman Sobieski. Commissioner Woods.
Here.
Commissioner Hoffman. And Commissioner Wakama.
Here.
You're all set.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys hear me? Because my, I see I'm frozen.
We can hear you. Yes.
Okay, all right. So we're, we're gonna sit Peter in the place of Stanley and Susan in the place of Gia for tonight's meeting.
All right, so now I will tell you, there's no changes to the agenda.
The approval agenda is good, no changes, public participation. For items not listed on the agenda. Is there anybody in the room there?
Yes, we have one coming up to the mic.
Hi.
Is that me?
Bill McCarthy, two oh six Churchill Drive. I guess the first thing, there was, there was a lot of chatter on Facebook within the last couple of weeks about Weathersfield and what they're planning on doing as far as getting a grant to purchase some property up on Russell Road and also to increase the size of their reclamation, their, their, their stuff, stuff for refuse collection, which is down off of Jordan Lane. I just wanted to bring that up because I know that it was a hotly contested piece of conversation on Facebook. The thing that I really want to talk about is the, and I know Paul's already working on this, is, is the, the change in some of our zoning regulations. I'm, I'm concerned about two twenty Kits Lane. I, I'm, I don't think it's on tonight's agenda, so that's good. But it's been before the Conservation Commission now for, since twenty twenty three, and it's just, they're gonna schedule more hearings starting next month. By the time it gets around to you guys, it's gonna be so documented that you'll be able to rezone it the same, same day that it comes before you. What other things? I guess that's it. I, I think you guys are doing a great job. Oh, Dave's Hot Chicken is getting ready to open up and very interesting, very colorful.
Okay, so it looks like at this moment, Steve has, Mr. Commissioner Woods has disconnected. We'll see if he comes back on. Do we have anyone online who wishes to speak? So if there's anyone online, raise your hand if you wish to speak during public participation. No one else has their hand raised? Okay. So we can either take a beat and wait for Steve to see if he can reconnect on that one. Otherwise, someone in the room can temporarily take over the next item on the agenda, other than, actually, we could say, remarks by commissioners, if you'd like to kind of move into that. Oh, is that back? Good.
I think he's still connecting with his audio.
Yep, Steve's coming back. He just has to connect with his audio, I think. While we're waiting for that, like Paul said, is there any commissioners that have any comments at this point? Because that is next on the agenda.
No comments here.
No comment.
All right. So I say, June, I see you there. Just hang in there for a moment. I can't run the meeting staff, but we still see nothing on his under.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't even say, audio is trying to connect. His video is up, but it's black. Because he's not even muted, so he just got off again. If you want to see if Mr. Minor is being a senior.
Yep. So I don't know if either someone in the room or if this case, so typically how it works, if all three of the, you know, elect officer positions, as I said, it goes to a senior member of the committee, of the commission, and a lot of times when I've done that, it's kind of an agreement in those who are here. So if anyone would like to take over chair, we do have, you know, you in the room as well, or Chris Minor online as well. So I think it's kind of a discussion. Again, the, the next order is to call the public hearing to order, and then to me, read the hearing notice in, and then for the applicant to give their presentation.
Chris, you want to take it or you want?
Actually, why don't you take it, Joe? Steve's gonna, he's trying to call me. Hold on a second. Standby.
I love technology.
Oh, yeah. When it works, it's wonderful. Not so much when it doesn't. Hang on a second. Yeah, Joe, why don't you take it over? I'm gonna try to connect with Steve on the other side.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was, it was Mike who spoke up.
Oh, sorry, Mike.
No problem. Okay, where are we?
So we are now on item six.
Item six, public hearing. Would you want to read the rules for public hearing, or should I have?
Do you have them up?
I'll read it.
Yep.
I don't care. Go for it. All right. Public hearing, A, petition TPZ dash twenty five dash two, special permit, section three dot one five dot six, for a place of recreation for an indoor pickleball facility at one seventy two Kits Lane, also known as one sixty two, one ninety two Kits Lane, in the BBT Business Berlin Turnpike Zone. Applicant, contact Jun Zhang, owner, one seventy two Kits LLC.
So I will reread. I know there are specific, I don't know if you have those up, the rules, but I will, while Eric's looking for those, I will now reread it again, because I have to officially read the public hearing notice in its entirety. So, Newington Town Plan and Zoning Commission, notice of public hearing, February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five at seven PM. Notice is hereby given that the Newington Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing in the Council Chambers, Room one oh three, at Town Hall, two hundred Garfield Street, Newington, Connecticut, on Wednesday, February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, to consider the following petitions. Petition TPZ twenty five dash two, special permit, section three point one five point six, for a place of recreation for an indoor pickleball facility at one seventy two Kits Lane, AKA one sixty two to one ninety two Kits Lane, in the BBT Business Berlin Turnpike Zone. Applicant, contact Jun Zhang, owner, one seventy two Kits LLC. This public hearing will be a Zoom webinar hybrid meeting. Information had to attend. We posted on the town website at link follows. These petitions and related materials are available for public inspection at the Town Planner's Office, Town Hall, Room two oh four, and through the published agenda at the Town Plan and Zoning Commission Agenda Center, link follows. Persons who require an accommodation to participate in this public hearing should contact the Town Planner at eight six zero six six five eight five seven eight, or townplanner@newingtonct.gov, not less than twenty four hours before the public hearing. Submitted Paul Dixon, Town Planner, and it ran in the rare reminder, February thirteenth and February twentieth.
We have to read the public hearing notice?
Nope, I got that, and we typically have those rules that we sometime read. I think the slide is missing from it that falls out every now and then.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
I think we can probably go into it. The key is that the applicant gives their presentation, the commission asks questions of it, the public is then given a chance to speak for or against, and then the applicant is given a chance to rebut and, or to provide additional information.
Is the applicant here?
Yeah, I'm on this. Can you hear me?
Yep, and please state your, so June, we can hear you, and please state your name and address for the record.
So my name is June Zhang. My home address is seven thirty eight Bark Street, Swansea, Massachusetts. And do you need the office address too, or?
No, I think that'll do, just to have one address for the, so from here, what you do is you just give a, you know, you're providing the presentation on what you're proposing, kind of what you had in your your narrative. From there, the commission have some questions. So the floor is yours to give your presentation.
Um, okay, so we, I want to open up a pickleball facility at one seventy two Kits Lane. It's gonna be for people of all ages, and they can come in, you know, when they want to play pickleball. And then it's gonna be open anywhere from like seven, six AM in the morning, all the way like nine at night. I don't know, this is, this is our first pickleball facility, but it's not my first time doing any business. The other, I mean, like, we opened Fun City in Rocky Hill as well, that is, that is us as well. So this is our first venture into the pickleball, sort of thing that's been going on. Everybody's been hyping it up, so I wanted to give it a try. And that, that's sort of it.
Yep. If you want to just give a little bit more information about how many courts, how many people you expect to be there at its peak occupancy, kind of a little more of that information, if you could.
Sure. I mean, the facility allows for, I think, I mean, it's gonna be around four people every court. There's, I have to look at the plans. There's about fifteen, fifteen courts currently, and one, and a few practice courts on the side. I mean, at peak occupancy, I would think we're probably gonna be around four times fifteen, fifteen is sixty, sixty, a few more other players, probably around eighty people at peak, but I, I'm not sure if we'll ever hit that, unless it becomes really, really popular.
What did you say the hours are, sir?
Nine to nine.
What was that?
Nine to nine.
Nine to nine.
Want to know what the hours were again?
Was it nine AM to nine AM? I mean, nine PM?
Yeah, that was, he asked about your hours for the facility. And he responded nine to nine.
Is that about it?
Yeah. Um, I, I've been playing some pickleball at other facilities, and they opened up earlier, so I might maybe change hours a little bit earlier, like seven, potentially. But we're gonna see how the business goes before I start making any adjustments.
Okay, Paul? Yep, so staff has reviewed the application. So as a special permit application, there's a lot of may's in there. The commission may do this or that, and may require it. On this application, no required site plan, because there's no changes to the site. They're just occupying the existing building. Again, to kind of refresh, I think everyone kind of knows where we're talking about. But this is the former Bob's Clothing Stores, which is right now, stick these furniture, took their temporary residency in there. When they came in, they were temporary anyway. That was from a retail to retail, so there was no change. It didn't have to come to the commission. A place of recreation is a special permit. That's why we're here, holding the public hearing. So in this case, we looked at the whole plaza. Plaza has a lot of parking spaces. If you look at the staff report, the estimate from, you know, as he's talking about, like sixty people or so, what we did is, I'm gonna share this, just to give the commission a little more part we're talking about is this right here. So the big red box with the star in the middle of it is the facility or the building that they're looking to open this facility. As we know, it shares the same with the same plaza Stop and Shop. There are other stores in between. There are some current vacancies. It's bizarre that though, actually, so we did receive, it's not bearing on this application. We did receive another application where they're looking to put a buffet into the same plaza. And the key thing is, the plaza itself has five spaces per one thousand when it was approved. And that's irregardless of use. So when we do plazas in town, most of them, the current regulation for parking is four point five spaces per thousand. When this was approved, the commission determined five. So any use that's in here is okay by that five per thousand if it's allowed. But staff did is looked at it and said, okay, since it's a special permit, we're considering what could be the, what we would consider maximum on our parking. What I've done is put aside what would be, you can see on the screen, it's a little harder to see, but it's in the staff report, this red outline that I highlighted, I put it's a total amount of, what is it, a hundred and sixty three spaces, and are one hundred and sixty five, and it requires one hundred and sixty three if we reviewing it as a standalone place of recreation and not with the five per one thousand. So if we were looking at it, you can see that of the parking area, at a hundred and sixty five spaces are available, including adjacent to it, well beyond what they think that the requirement will be. And even if you look at it, four per court, even if you doubled it, it's be looking at a hundred and eighty spaces. This would be a whole line of people waiting to play and a whole group of people playing. This would be in unusual circumstances, but even if you look at that, there's fifty nine spaces even to the south of this. So there's a significant amount of parking. Staff does not see a parking issue on the site with this use. So that's the thing where the commission may request a traffic report, but in this case, staff doesn't think that it's necessary in this case, at least from our perspective, on a review of it. From there, it's pretty much an existing plaza. It'll activate that plaza, it'll continue life in it. It's the bad thing overall. It's kind of like when it came into Lowry Place, we had the same discussion. Okay, you're open into a former retail or grocery store, or whatever you were. But the key thing is to keep occupancy of this buildings, and many of them in the Berlin Turnpike. And this use is trending right now. I think that make a good go of it, sixteen courts that are there, along with a small little court. So even if you look at that for maximum occupancy, it's a lot of parking. Other than that, staff doesn't really have too many comments. The only issue that we found on the site is there's one missing stop sign. And that's when you come around the corner, can't see it too well in this picture, but when you come around the corner from this drive, the intersection with the main drive, it's just missing, we're requesting that the property owner install a new stop sign, replace it. Other than that, everything else is intact.
Okay, thank you.
Question? Commissioner Hoffman here. Is this gonna be a full-time? If there's no partial, so many months of the year, it's a full-time operation, correct?
Yep. So I will, I'll refer to the applicant. As I said, the application did not indicate any temporary use of the space, so this will be approval for it to continue as a place of recreation. So yes, there would be no limits on duration.
Go ahead, Chris. Online, Minor, sorry. Yeah, his hand raised.
Thank you, Eric. Just to clarify, we also have a special use with Planet Fitness for Recreation as well, correct?
I was, was that, oh, that wasn't for me. Sorry.
No, that wasn't directed. I am not sure. I would have to look. I don't know if it was there when the plaza approved, if there was something there, honestly.
Yeah, they were not an original tenant in there. They were brought in.
They moved over there.
Right. So I just was curious if the, the same special permit applied, but that was my only question.
Yep, and if someone came in with a news. It should be, but depending on when it was approved. But again, we haven't researched that. I would say that any new use coming in, just like them, for a place of recreation would be required to do special. You're muted, Susan.
Commissioner Hoffman.
So we confer any handicap spots?
So if you can see on the plan, there are existing handicap spots that are there, but they're actually located pretty close to in front of this facility. So there are four accessible spaces in a crosswalk that lead directly to the entrance.
And any deterioration of that parking lot, which is all, especially when you go out past Joey Garlicks, we wouldn't have any ability to see that those things were corrected, or any interest in seeing that those things were correct.
So I'd answer that if they were going through in a site plan and making changes, I think our, our scope would be broader on what we're looking at. As part of a special permit, we have encouraged people to fix parking lots before. There is, it's not as deteriorated as the condition. It's not like when we were out there, and again, not to point to Lowry, but they did fix it. When Lowry came in, that was one of the conditions that they fixed the parking lot, because there were potholes, there was a collapse in catch basin. There were things that were public safety hazards that were fixed. When we were out there, we didn't necessarily see any stark public safety hazards. So normal paving recourse. I think the applicant can probably answer as well if they have any plans, as far as crack ceiling, ceiling, repaving the parking lot.
So in terms of our approval, it wouldn't really make a difference if he had ten courts or five, right? Yeah, he could put as many in as he wants.
I didn't catch that part, ten.
He was asking if there was a difference whether he had ten courts or five courts, as long as he meets the parking requirements.
Yeah, as long as he meets the parking requirements, and the park, and that's the thing is, you know, when we do these shopping plazas, and that's a good thing when we do shopping plazas that way, because they typically have well excess parking that they need.
Because he didn't seem too sure of how many, when he presented. I'm, I'm not saying that negatively. I'm just saying you answered my question.
Yep. And June, do you have anything to add regarding any plans for the plaza maintenance?
Well, yeah, so my dad owns the plaza, and so like, whenever, whenever roofs and stuff get broken, like, we're, we're right on top of it. So if there's anything else that you guys are requesting, I can, I could tell him tomorrow morning as well. But we're, the, the plaza isn't, last time I went, which is a few months ago, is in pretty decent shape, I think. Am I on mute?
No, we were, we're, sorry.
All right.
Would we, if, if he was, if let's say he's putting in sixteen courts now, and I don't know, I don't know if there are, you know, requirements as to how large the court has to be or whatever. But I mean, I mean, if he said, well, I need some more, I have room to put some more without
So no, it'd just be for, so specifically, because we didn't list, or sixteen, or sixteen courts and a little player or something, so I think, no, it's not that specifically limited. We're looking at the entire court footage. Eric's is gonna put up the, he's gonna put up the floor plan that they provided. It actually shows you, they're pretty much maxing out.
Maxed out the space in Bob's store, putting in the number of
Yeah, it, it can't go much more than that.
It's pretty well fit out for this space.
I want them to have fun.
So to answer your question, you know, as long as you're not changing the footprint of the building, she said, oh, I need to add on to the building. Courts, this is site plan modification, these other things you get, he rearranges things internally and does all that stuff.
Yep, it could end up with sixteen courts, it could end up with fourteen courts. It could end up, you know, as they find that, how things work, and I think there could be some, you know, there's always evolution to businesses. And I think we, as far as looking at that, the real thing is irrespective of use, the parking is there, minor changes to the inside, we won't make them come back, unless it was a major change or an increase in the size of the building, the intent or something of what it is.
Or, for instance, if in future, he decide he wanted to serve food or have a liquor license, those do require their own other special permits going forward.
Yep.
I think we're ready for public comment. So if anybody has, is in favor of this petition, you're online, please raise your hand.
Susan, Susan has her hand raised, but go ahead, Susan. I think you have some questions anyway.
All right, go ahead, Susan.
No, I didn't have any questions, but I was raising my hand in favor.
Sorry. Okay. Right, so anybody in favor?
Bill McCarthy, two oh six Churchill Drive. I think this is a wonderful addition to the Kits Lane Plaza. I'm glad that Paul mentioned the stop sign. That's like suicide, trying to come out of Stop and Shop out to Kits Lane, because nobody knows who's supposed to stop or where's, who's got the right of way or anything like that. So I think that's very good, very good that that's being addressed. I think the more properties we can get filled in that plaza, the better. That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
No one online has their hand raised.
Okay, anybody against this petition?
No one online has their hand raised, Mr. Fitz.
Okay. Anybody just want to say something? Okay. All right, I guess that's it. Chair will entertain a motion to close this hearing and bring it to old business for a vote tonight.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Got it.
Okay, Minor, second it. Any discussion? Or in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? So moved. This will be voted on tonight, sir.
And just like, no, it is under new business, but that's fine.
Oh, is it?
Yep.
I'm sorry. Oh, look at that.
Maybe.
Okay.
Yep. He's, he's just getting some, a print. So right now you have your
All right. Prove with the minutes, chair will recognize, will listen to a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any, any questions, comments, additions, deletions? Or in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. All right. You in favor out there? Okay, thank you. But it's been approved. Get him eight new business. Who wants to read the petition?
I don't mind reading it.
You don't mind reading it?
I don't mind.
You must be an English teacher.
I, I'm all set, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. You'll find out whether you're going to get it or not.
You can either hang around and listen, or you can just get notified.
All right, thank you.
All right, John, thank you.
All right, under new business, petition TPZ dash twenty five dash two, special permit, section three point one five point six, for a place of recreation for an indoor pickleball facility at one seventy two Kits Lane, AKA one ninety two Kits Lane, in the BBT Business Berlin Turnpike Zone. Applicant, contact Jun Zhang. one ninety-two Kits Lane, in the B BT, it's just going turnpike zone, applicant contact, I'm saying, or seventy-two Kits Lane. Uh, excuse me, Kits LLC.
Give Paul his copy of the draft. There he is. At least.
Okay, since we already read it once, we can just go back down to the motion to approve.
That's a confusion, yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve with conditions. One, applicant to reinstall missing stop sign at northerly entrance drive and drive that runs easterly of Joey Garlicks. Reasons for approval, this application meets the requirements of the zoning regulations and the special permit requirements.
Motion's been approved and seconded. Any questions, any, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Susan. Chris?
Aye.
Okay. Just gonna make sure you heard. All right, thank you. Motion is approved unanimously.
I see Steve Woods is back on. Are you, is your audio working, Steve?
Um, audio, do you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
Okay, so I'm afraid to turn my camera on, um.
I would say just leave it off for the bandwidth. That's fine.
Yeah. So we're now, if I'm following this correctly, we're an old business, correct?
Yes, that is correct, yes.
All right, so we have one item in our proposed text amendment, alternative energy accessory structures. Um, Paul is gonna turn it over to you. We've done some work on this since you presented it last time.
Yes, I have some small work, so I can say, um, and again, it's, it's a continuing project, uh, just as we continue to talk. Um, it has been, um, submitted, um, to CROG, um, for the thirty days. Again, the anticipation that this would be potentially for a public hearing on the twenty-sixth of March. Um, on that one, and I need to bring up the proposed reg amendment. And what I'm really looking for is, again, as we continue to, you know, write this regulation, rewrite this regulation, is the, uh, commission's, um, thoughts, uh, concerns. Uh, we've worked through a good amount of them, I believe. Let's see if this works.
Call it a fine tuning of the.
Yes. I'll share it. Okay, so what I have up on the screen is the most recent draft, um, that was submitted, uh, two twenty um, to, um, the, uh, Capital Region Council of Governments for their review uh, for comment. Again, as a reminder, with their comment, you have to give them thirty days to do so. Their, their, uh, comment is just advisory. It doesn't say whether a commission can or can't approve something, but they just review it for, um, compatibility with surrounding plans and the overall plan for the region. Um, so.
Well, I don't know if it's just me or not, but I, all I see is the agenda up there. Maybe everybody else can see that.
It should be shared.
It is now. There you go.
Okay, good. Yep, just got the lag on that one. So I've left, um, the purpose, there's no change in that. Um, a mild, uh, change that was recommended when it was looked at. And again, as part of this, I've also been talking with the applicant um, who wants to put in the best as well, because you know, there's no point in writing a regulation that you can't actually implement and that just would stop it anyway. Um, again, the TPZ has said that, yes, you're okay with this administratively. Uh, as we noticed at the last meeting, we went back to it, we reviewed it and in discussions with the Z E O, we need some criteria for the next person who comes in. So while this will work for the current one too, I'm thinking about the future and what are the concerns? So one item that I did, minor one, it's updated to one megawatt instead of one megawatt hour. That's actually the proper stuff from the, uh, state statutes. Um, other than that, there aren't too many, uh, changes. And I can kind of reiterate the reason why that we have it fifty feet from the property line and notably one hundred feet from property containing a single, two-family or multifamily residential uses. So the town of Newington does have a noise ordinance. It's part of our code of ordinances that they'll have to comply with as well. However, there's no specific, um, regulations that talk about besses and noise. Would rely on, um, the town ordinance for that as well. But part of the main considering is that one hundred foot from a residence, if there is any noise from the fan that gives you a good buffer, this is the same buffer that we use for automotive uses, for example. So if, I, I felt that was kind of appropriate in the town as well. Again, this is a new use to us and to preserve harmony with the surrounding neighborhoods of any of these uses that that one hundred feet is the typical standard we use from anything, again, like an auto bar, you shop on something that would be making a good amount of noise. That's the reason why we have such a buffer uh, between that type of use. So we've kind of lumped them in on the same and use that as our general criteria. The fifty feet from another property line, it's kind of the same issue with commercial. Again, it's not as sensitive as a receptor of any noise, but fifty feet is a good amount away and also for preservation of properties. You know, this is something in talking with particularly the fire chief, um, in talking about his ability to respond, uh, if there was any issues. Again, we don't anticipate to there to be any issues. There are a lot of publications about besses that have had issues in the past, but they're being more and more installed. And these are better than they talked about months ago now. The ones in New York that caught fire, that was a bad bad battery supply. We kind of replaced that. What was happening when, um, this was new and sourcing different components, installing a best. Now most completely actually sourced at that one company put together. It's not this ad hoc way of putting together a structure which companies have had to be control over the process. Um, the other item that we did is, the other change is the, uh, so we originally had ten feet in heat. Um, in discussions, some of these things do have to be, you know, they're about ten feet. Uh, nine, nine, five, nine, eight is the typical size. If you have an undulating drain, if you need to put it six inches, ten inches, twelve inches revealed due to the kind of habitats underneath it, I don't want to even have one where someone's at ten feet. And if that hold up to nine, they install the battery. Fifteen feet is what we use now for accessory structures. So it's been our current zoning regulations, we now. As a change, ten to fifteen. Um, the other change, uh, again, talking about the maximum system keep. I shall not, previously led the maximum system footprint shall not exceed three hundred square feet. Uh, now it's the maximum sister system footprint, excluding the required enclosure area between the required fence and system shall not exceed three hundred feet. See here is, just to make sure that someone isn't coming in with something that covers a lot of land area that spreads these batteries out throughout after that, that we're looking at. These are accessories. If anyone wants to install anything mega watt, they have to go to the Connecticut Siding Council. Outside of our jurisdiction. Comment to the Siding Council with the same. Also, needless. A hundred times. And these are within under one megawatt, smaller systems, but we wanted to keep them somewhat condensed in size. This is very similar to the means that New York State. They've been the ones who are more the forefront writing regulations. And New York State has this to be in there for about three hundred square foot. I just wanted to clarify that again, just to make sure it is the size and enclosure. You have to be feet away from in this location that it's gonna be a little long overall. And another item in talking with them was, um, this was about the, uh, self, uh, locking gate. And in talking with them, they were like, they weren't asking if you're, you know, this is typical throughout. This is self-locking gate. But to make it a little clearer, I wanted, what I added is, or other secure locking mechanism required by relevant building. So if fire codes required something that wasn't one quote, a self-locking gate, whatever they require will be what's required because that's the fire code. Um, so that kind of takes care of any potential conflict between the zoning regulations and the fire code, again, which covers the installation, the construction, it covers, you know, what you need to have, how the system is constructed, if there's any internal fire suppression or not. All that is N F P eight fifty-five and other state, uh, fire codes and state building code will regulate how this thing is actually constructed. Um, and the other item, this all says the same thing. I cleaned it up a little bit, uh, might continue to be refined, but talking about that statement of the qualified professional. Again, I added in-town ordinances, uh, specifically because I do want them to be compliant with that. Clear to any applicant who comes in with a best, that is there as part of the review. And the other item that I added is a plot plan in compliance with requirements of section seven point four design. Um, I might rework this, so you know, compliance with the design standards of section seven point four, section point four is labeled site plan, you know, design standards. Um, the reason I incorporated this to not overburden this regulation, there's other stuff. So we're requiring, um, a security light. Well, we don't, we don't allow light poles over seventeen feet in height. I think it's seventeen, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, seventeen feet in height. And there's, could be some questions because we point this to the, um, zoning permit section. And a zoning permit section says it may require a plot plan. So I think a use like this requires more than just a very simple plot plan. It requires us to really be in a two survey and know where this thing is being located, know where the utilities are going and to have a good record of it. So I've added that in, again, so they'll have to comply with those design standards and it's clear. So we don't have an argument with someone in the future who says, well, your regulations don't say I need to meet those, so therefore I'm not going to. Um, that's why I added that in, not anticipating that, but you never know, you have to plan for those contingencies and to make it clear to any applicant what we're requesting of them before they come in. So I haven't made too many other changes than that. Um, again, I've been looking at the applicant and I've also been I reached out to them, again, using from time to time as planning consultant. But just to get another set of eyes on this, we're leaving the other regulations as well, since it is, we have a best in town on Richard Street. It's not new use, but we're looking at more as, you know, accessory rather than a primary or integrated as part of the solar system. Cause right now they're really more, we're used to these being integrated as part of a larger solar field that they get installed. This is being accessory to an actual building that is not generating electricity. So that's what I have for you. Um, again, um, kind of presented to at the last meeting and said, if there's any comments on this, welcome to entertain any questions, concerns, revisions, please let me know.
Hey, anybody have any questions, um, for Paul and, uh, Paul or, uh, um, Eric, you're gonna have to be my eyes on the guys that are there, um, because I can't.
That's all right.
All right, so I see Chris Minor has his hand up. Go ahead, Chris.
Yep.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, just, Paul, have you had any response from any of the neighboring states? Cause this is really a hotbed issue specifically in the Northeast for whatever reason. I was just curious to see if you've had any luck with, uh, getting any information as to what they're doing as well.
Other than reviewing their regulations is what we've been doing. Um, and again, it's, it's New York who's at the forefront. Uh, who has actually written the regulations. Um, I have, there are none that I found in Connecticut. Um, and I had Mike, uh, look as well too. Um, again, that's through Taiji, Tomato, Mike Tomato. Uh, he looked as well too, to make sure I wasn't missing anything. Um, but no, there are none in Connecticut. Again, it's newer that we have these smaller, uh, besses. When you go to New York, um, even the city, you'll find these in alleys. Um, you'll find them all over the place. Uh, so they're not as new elsewhere, but they're definitely new to us.
Yeah, they're, they're new to Connecticut. They're new to Massachusetts. Uh, I know several municipalities in Massachusetts that I just happen to know people there and they're, they're going through the same pains as we are. But I think you're on the right path. I'd be curious to, uh, CROG's comments and further review at this point, but I think we're moving in the right direction.
Hey, anybody else?
We have, um, Commissioner Harpy who has a question?
Yes, um, I noticed that some states, California in particular has listed them, uh, this, these systems to have a cybersecurity risk. And I know that's really not what we're specking on, but is that something that could be added? That there has to be some redundancy system, a backup system?
So I think, so this is my catchall statement?
Saying they wouldn't do that.
Yeah, I, I think that's gonna be for zoning, that is typically we wouldn't see something that fine grained, um, to talk about that specific one. We do ask, you know, relevant, you know, that, that big catchall that I wrote, uh, that is actually, so that catchall is reviewing New York's. It's also reviewing, um, the large installation that just is either going through approval and killingly as well. Um, I reviewed their town's entire response. They have a big facility, um, that's proposed up there. And they had the same one talking about industry standards. So as the industry standards catch up, I think that's something that the owners are gonna figure out and the, in the industry to figure out how to kind of protect these things going forward. And we have the same thing with our entire grid. Um, you know, what's the issue if there was a concern that, you know, someone would hack them? Um, but for our case, that's why we're keeping them so far away from other properties, um, that yes, if you choose to put these on one of your property, all the fire code, as far as the distance to your building, the distance to your horse truck. That's your choice as a property owner. If they chase that back from the other properties, just to kind of provide that buffer, just like, okay, whatever risk may be inherent, it's away from you. So it's a choice for the property owner, it's not the property owner. Put it there. I think that's kind of a roundabout way of kind of answering it. Yeah, I did. Yes. The property owner may choose to install lots of cameras, they may choose to install some cameras, they may choose to have that, you know, assessment of what's the risk for this, uh, structure.
The other thing I California thirty B. I'm a New York store, thirty, whatever the numbers.
Commissioner Harvey, you up that?
Oh, he's speaking actually, so it's a little hard to hear. You might want to pull that mic just a little closer to you. I know, we'll mess up the space, but it'll be fine.
You'll be good.
Yeah, so the question was about, um, a surety bond and I will look into it. It's something I have seen. It's typically something you see on large installations. Um, but it is a question, you know, what happens? It's the question for all of us. What happens when something's built and just sits there? Um, that's something I will definitely look into and see if we can.
Well, that might be California just showing off.
Yeah, and, and, and like, for example, when things go through the Siding Council, um, killingly on theirs, uh, they, they requested, uh, cash. Uh, you know, that was the town's thing of like, we want cash sitting aside just in case it happens. And that was their authority to request. What the Siding Council does is different. On the large sites, that is definitely all, pretty much always done. Um, because it's a huge assembly of materials and they're all sitting in the woods. So in that case, if that happened and there was degradation, you're, you're causing a lot of pollution potentially. Uh, in this case, with a smaller unit, I will look into it, but I haven't typically seen them with the smaller units, you know, requiring a surety bond. And then looking into like the legalities of that from a town sense of requiring it.
And I have one last thing. Um, out there on the West Coast, they require the fire department, a local fire department to share their action plan before the town will sign the, sign off on it. To get you in.
Yep, I will look. And so as part of it, so when we discussed this, when the applicant came in here, when they were originally looking to do this along Cedar Street and they were gonna have to rewrite the regulations and they went, never mind, we'll move it back away where the TPZ said they would prefer. Um, or at least some members at that point, and also not to go through the regulatory process of changing a regulation to, for them specifically, which led me to write the regulation, but I digress, sorry about that. Um, I think, I actually lost my place. We ran out of that one, sorry. If you can restate.
The fire department?
Yes, so they did have, um, what they were offering and it's something, A, to, for training for the fire department. So they had offered that at the start of this, so that would be good too. And typically as part of these, and I can double check N F P eight fifty-five, but as part of the process, they're supposed to have specific signage onsite as part of that, that talks about it and that specific plan that says in case of emergency, do this. And, um, I'll check that to make sure that that is in N F P fifty-five and I do not need to duplicate it. But yeah, that, that was the main concern. But yeah, that, that was the main concern um from the fire chief as well, you know, when I respond to this, how am I gonna respond? Where are my guys gonna set up? Here's the distance I need, but it's also what information is on the unit, but what information is on the disconnect? So that, that plan should be shared with them, but there should also be something onsite at the disconnect away from it. That gives information about the system.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Gentlemen, see anybody with their hands up?
No, doesn't appear to be male, says their hands up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're gonna move on then to uh next items, petitions received or scheduling. We have two. Paul, do they need to be read into the record?
Oh, no, I can just kind of uh give people a heads up. So the first one is um the drive-through restaurant. Uh, we know that one for fifty-six Costello Road. That was uh previously in front of you to change the parking requirements uh for um indoor showrooms. Indoor retail showrooms. So their showroom is there, they have the parking that they need. So right now we are working with the applicant on this one. Um, we have requested a uh traffic study that he's getting. Um, just because the queuing Costello Road, they'll have more information. I don't wanna present their application for them. We have been working on them, the owner will. Uh, when you present it, it should be in front of you. Their timeline to get it in front of you is later than March twenty-sixth, of additional days. This is just the background. We've already done one of the two of the plans and given them comments and then we'll go. Today, or actually Monday or Friday, receive the updated. If the um commission does want this, they can come in and present on the twelfth as well too, if there are additional questions. Okay, they do have to advertise for the public hearing and present all the wealth in the public hearing because it is a drive-through um restaurant. That's that. Um, the other one is one ninety-six fifteen. So this is uh kind of what I mentioned during the previous application. But they're looking to put a restaurant in there. Um, that came in, came in, yeah, that came in Friday as well too. Um, so it's on here, it's officially received. So we will view that and bring them in front of you as well if you have questions on the site. Again, it has a lot of parking. So the next item is mine as well.
Yeah, you heard Town Planner Report, we have two items in there currently and you said, and then your actual update.
Yep, so six ninety Cedar Street, we all know the spark closed. Uh, they'll be doing their groundbreaking uh next week, um, the fifth. Uh, so that will be getting going. Um, the main thing on that property is uh I've kind of let them know, I believe they have. Year and a little bit of change left on their site plan. Um, they, they just missed the COVID bonus of their timing. That went from five years to fourteen. Um, by like two months or three months, they got approved just after that expired or just before, I think just after that expired. So they do have another, so they may have to come in front just for a um, you know, extension of the time period. But if they can get it done in a year, they can get them in a year, but I've been discussing with them. But again, that should be progressing and I expect them to actually break ground soon on that one, since you've been kind of. Going through the process, but it has been sold, will be a groundbreaking next week. Yep, and they posted their erosion control bond, so they're ready to go. Uh, five fifty Cedar Street, so they, we've been working with them, so this is Dakota. Um, they've been working through the building department on their final inspections. Uh, should have a reinspection tomorrow and if they pass that as well, so on this, we just wanna inform the um. The T P Z that I did request a bond, um, request a, is a forty-one thousand dollar bond on this site. It's primarily because they seeded the grass, uh, large area of grass so late in the season, October. And then we hit a drought area, it grew. Um, and then there's some other grass and other things on the site. But there's no, um, there's nothing that we saw that was a public safety issue for opening for C O. And again, this is primarily with the grass, but I'd like to inform them when I have requested. On and this is not, you know, just a hundred, two thousand dollar one, it is that, but they are overnighting the check and so they should be opening. And again, this will be returned a hundred percent to them as a reminder on works. It's just to make sure that they finish out the project, get all the work done, deliver what they say they were gonna deliver as product. So that's move forward and hopefully open. Hopefully they'll be doing that. I know they put out. On when they first were looking, opening when I first started here, actually, I went to a press conference there with the governor and they were starting to take names. And then, you know, for applications and then closed it, hopefully they should be reopening that and getting people in there soon. Uh, we know Dave's Hot Chicken, um, as was mentioned, very colorful, but construction is nearing completion. Uh, they'll be seeking a C O in March, so I expect that to open sometime in March. Um, the one item that they had there uh that was discussed when they came is the grease trap. Unfortunately, they paved it before, they had something they felt would work inside and D C said, nope, you gotta cut your parking lot and install a new one. So they had to cut their brand new parking lot and install a grease trap, but um, that will be repaved. Uh, we'll look at, you know, we'll assess the condition of it. Whether it can sit in its current condition or how it needs to be repaved, but we'll probably collect a small bond on that for final pavement. Couple thousand dollars just to make sure it gets done, but they'll obviously want to do it. Um, eleven seventy Main Street Kene, uh, we recently met with an architect about a future uh potential application in there. Again, we're still talking with them, still working with them. Um, that's just to let you know that there still is some continuing discussion on that property. Uh, so the um Olympia Diner, I know the community wants to know what's going on. I've been asked that question multiple times. Um, I have had, you know, discussions with their attorney, nothing super recently. Um, nothing has been submitted yet um regarding any proposal, cause when they came in front for the pre-application. Again, the main concerns on that site is that thirty-five foot um front buffer required in the Berlin Turnpike, no pavement, no accessory structures. They needed to put a uh, per their plan, they would have put a drive-through speaker and changed the pavement and added more um within that. So that was an issue with our zoning regulations. So they're likely to be coming in with a regulation amendment or, again, I haven't seen anything yet. So we'll see when that comes in. Um, Hungry Ball Bowl at thirty twenty-five uh Berlin Turnpike is open, appears to be busy. Um, so that's good to get the old T G A Fridays back, um, that building in operation again. Let's see, Casadora, we know everyone's seen that's open and extremely busy. They did, um, so at the last Conservation Commission meeting, um, a record, a letter was read into the record. Cause they did remove some trees within the upland review area. They also added a parking lot which wasn't previously approved. Again, we're gonna continue to work with them, though we're working with them on an application to come in. It will come into the T P Z as well, cause it increases parking, but it will also come into the Conservation Commission because it's within a hundred foot upland review area. It's in the upland review area of primarily uh drainage ditch slash brook. Um, that's between the two properties, between that and Price Shopper behind it. So, you know, it's mainly a stormwater type of wetland, but that will be in front of Conservation Commission. Uh, so the uh three, three, three Durk Berlin Turnpike most recently received plans for a chiropractor on the commercial. I believe that would be building C, the longer building, it's like A, B are the two restaurant buildings that are closest. Yeah, yeah, this is the one with PJ's Coffee and it's building C, so that's again continuing to lease up. Uh, two, six, six, one Berlin Turnpike to live, uh, the cannabis store, the state license was approved and um assigned permit's been approved. So that'll probably be opening soon. Um, sixty-seven um Payne Road, we know Sunbelt Rentals, that building was completely, we've all seen the business uh relocated there. I haven't received any issues um on that site and they do have some minor planting in the back to do um potentially with the. Uh, stormwater um basin in the back that they built, um, just because they had seeded it. And then they seeded it with the wrong type of rye that would come back, so whether it killed out the plants or not, we'll have to see in the spring. But we'll work with them on that site. Uh, and then we all know seven twelve's uh Cedar Street, Woodspring Suites opened, uh, we worked with them. So that's our first uh, you know, new hotel in a very long time um in the town. And other than a motel, so we have another hotel located next to C C S U. I hope they do well. Um, noted closes, this is being brought up, so you know, Joanne Fabrics, uh, this is something I've been following. Um, Eric has had discussions with potential tenants, so this is the main thing that we've looked at along the brown. Are seeing these large national chains, we're having issues. It's a tough year for brick and. Forecasting is good amount of these large stores are gonna have some issues going forward, but we've seen, as soon as they close, we're getting calls. From other people interested in spaces, so that is good, uh, a level of interest, so hopefully we'll see something to me on that site. But uh, I was following that. They were potentially for bid, maybe someone was going to receiver ship, take over the stores. But uh, most reporting that I've seen is no one kind of bid, so it broke. Articity, no information on that as well, again, that's. Plaza, Play Fitness, um, right now, I think the owner's trying to figure out what they want to do with the building. There might not be that much desire to kind of subdivide it. It's a sixty thousand square foot space. So finding someone to take that space is a little challenging in this market right now, but we'll see what the building owner goes forward with. As they know, and as Eric has talked to them, if they have ideas, just talk to us. Uh, we wanna see this building. And other than that, Staples, uh, the pop furniture store is likely, you know, there was reporting in the. That's kind of what I have for updates of what's going around on the town. And just to remind people that the charrette for the town center uh study is on Saturday, March eighth. Uh, starting at nine o'clock, um, so that will be um. Nine to noon roughly on that, and I think it actually starts at nine thirty doors open. If you come in at nine, again, my plan is here early and my plan is also to stay here late as well. Uh, it will be, again, it's a charrette to those, get this question off, what is a charrette? Um, charrette really, if you wanna think about the exercises, it's, it's going through maps. Looking at the uses, looking at densities, looking at how you see the vision for this developing out. And again, there are no, there's no predetermined plans. That's why this process is here. For the community to say, you know, this is where, what I would like to see in those areas. And then we take all that together and look at the masses, you know, the massing of where people have said they like certain uses. What type of density, what type of heights, what type of uses, pull that together, pull that in the report and then we start generating the ideas for. These land uses, this place, this type of density, and then present it to the community. The community input is first uh in this project before we make any conclusions. So this is to get. Before we move forward to say, yes, this is kind of a plan moving forward. And again, this is not the final um workshop, there'll be another workshop. Um, towards the end, when the actual plan is drafted, to get comments on it, to make tweaks, to change sections. But the key thing is this charrette is an in-person event. And it's not easily duplicated to do it in person and online as well. However, for those who can't attend, we are looking to do an online version with similar type of materials to make sure that we're engaging with those community who can. On Saturday morning at nine o'clock, uh, who have, you know, things with their kids, who have predetermined sports, this, that. That, there's lots of reason to elect someone to get here to town hall. So expanding the reach of the um charrette is what I'm looking to do as part of the project. So again, that's March eighth, nine o'clock, right here in Town Council Chamber.
Any questions for Paul on his report and updates?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, uh.
Joe Harpy?
Joe Harpy, yep.
I might have missed this, but did you, was Dix included in your update to us? The sporting?
No, Dix closed a few years ago, there's a furniture store in there now.
Just furniture store.
Yeah.
Now, I knew it was closed, I didn't know.
Yeah, he's, he's been there over a year now, so maybe that's a good thing, cause when he originally went in, I had a discussion with him, he says, well, I'm gonna try it out for years, see how it goes. He's still there, so hopefully he's doing well enough to survive right now and.
Yeah, got a pulse, right? That's the important thing.
Yep, got a pulse, as, as long as the use is permitted, keep the buildings occupied, keep them maintained.
Well, I appreciate your uh sensitivity of refilling these empty large buildings as quickly as possible. Yet within the specific requirements that we have. Think that's clearly important in this economy.
Yes.
You clearly have an understanding of that, so that's great.
Along those lines, in that, in that same plaza, sorry, Mr. Chairman, um, Ollies is getting ready to open as well there. They have, all their signed permits have been approved, I think they're doing some interior work. I don't know what their actual opening day is, but we should expect that sooner than later.
So Commissioner Harpy, you're set?
Thank you.
Yes, and I don't see anybody else. So next is Communications?
Yep, so the Crog letters are included in your packets, um, just as a reminder, everyone, when you see these. Again, these are notice to us of what's going on, but it's also an opportunity to see trends um that are happening across the towns. So if you see a trend, if you see something that says, hey, that, you know, we could do that, or I wanna know more information about that, reach out to me. Um, and I can get a copy of whatever was proposed. Again, the Crog notices just give you kind of the overall. But I can easily get you a copy of, you know, I wanna see what zoning regulation they're working on, could this work in Newington? That's the reason why these are sent out, A, to inform you what's going on in neighboring communities, but it's also to make sure that everyone kind of sees the trends. And if there's something going on that you would like to see, please let me know.
Okay, the next item is public participation, again, for items not listed on our agenda. And the speakers are limited to three minutes. See, uh, I believe it's you, Ms. Lyons, I see your hand up, go ahead. Eric, go on unmute her.
Hi, Rose Ions, forty-six Elton Drive. I wanna thank you, Paul, for the update to what's going on around town. Um, I wish that more people would watch this meeting. I don't know if you have a count or if there's any way of telling how many actually watch. But with the chatter that goes back and forth on Facebook, especially number one, I think I contacted Eric about it. Uh, that it was posted that the sign was down in front of Kene because it was up for sale and there was a new broker and now you're telling me. And Eric has, well, had told me that you were still in negotiations, you had talks with the architect. Um, with the Hartford Hospital or Hartford Healthcare Property. People on Facebook again are going back and forth, why should we participate? We're not gonna, we don't own the property, we don't have any say. Back and forth and all that. Um, I just, like I said, wish that they would pay more attention to what goes on here. I know that you're not gonna answer, you can't answer, we're not having a back and forth, but uh, the last time they did not have. The uh meeting, the informational meeting with the consultants on Facebook or any, or not Facebook, on YouTube or anything like that. So I'm assuming that the only way to participate in the charrette is to uh appear in person. I may have missed this because I was going back and forth between the Board of Ed meeting and your meeting. But did you mention anything about the Frisbee property that I had questioned last time? If not, next time, could you add that into your report? Um, thank you very much, that's it.
Ms. Lyons, just to, you know, you are the only person in attendance from the public tonight, other than N C T V. Um, so there's, there's not many.
I think they're all watching the Board of Ed, to be honest with you.
And again, they might be watching later, but.
And there are five people watching on YouTube.
So that's where they get their information, is Facebook, so, okay, thank you very much.
Paul did say that they're gonna try to do some sort of online version for the charrettes for people who can't attend. Um, I'm not sure we know what that's gonna look like yet, but they're working on seeing what they can do.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you want, I can actually expound on a little bit.
Sure.
Um, so the online, it's gonna, it'll also depend on how the process goes. If we see, you know, we've done dry runs as to move this forward, but what works, what doesn't work, and then how to move it to online. Again, I'll be working with, you know, across the community. I hope to get the survey out to not only the Board of Ed, also. You know, I have a great partner at the Senior Center with Jamie uh as well too. And when I get this survey out there, I think the goal is gonna be, you know, for those who maybe. Now aren't as comfortable with technology and if they are going to the Senior Center. To make myself available at certain times before their lunches or something, to find a specific time to go over there, say, Town Planner. to make myself available at certain times before their lunches or something, to find a specific time to go over there, say, Town Planner will be here. Do you have questions? And also to help them through the process, and you know, what does this mean, what does that mean? So, um, I can say too, uh, as part of the process for the charrette, uh, last Friday, I walked around, uh, the Town Center, went into a whole bunch of businesses with the flyers for the charrette and talked to everyone about it. It was actually a great experience where, you know, it's the good, humbling planning, uh, planner experience of when you talk to these managers of the businesses. They really say, well, I'm never gonna, I'm never gonna call you, never gonna participate in a meeting, but since you're in front of me, I have things to say. And people would share what they, what their concerns were with areas of the town. So that's something, a good, always a good lesson for planners that get out there. Uh, it was a great experience to talk with people, but it's something, you know, that helps to continue to replicate, uh, to all of our processes.
Okay. And is there anybody in the room, um, gentlemen, that wants a?
Uh, he's here, but I believe he's set his pace this evening.
Okay. To everybody for my, for my mess up on, uh, on Zoom tonight, I don't know why, but it just, I couldn't get it going. But it is working now, thank God. Uh, next item is remarks by commissioners. Anyone? Quiet. I just wanna thank everybody for coming out. Again, I apologize for, uh, my problem. I, I will share this with you, Paul. Um, if we do something that is online, it, it has to be solely online. It can't be a hybrid. Our technology in the town of Newington is not set up for these kind of meetings. Um, it, I, I know why the public gets frustrated, um, and it's nobody's fault. Um, other than we just don't have the right system yet in place. Um, the, the microphones pick you up sometimes, sometimes they don't, um, the camera picks you up, sometimes it doesn't. Um, so if somebody is watching it, they're gonna hit the leave for end meeting very quickly, I believe. But I will say though, if we're running completely online meeting, then it seems to be fine. It's the hybrids we still have trouble with.
Yep, and I'll, I'll add to that, actually, I do have someone who's watching along too, and they basically say, think everyone's microphone was doing that, coming in and coming.
Yeah, like you were coming in, coming, yeah, you were coming in and coming out, um, and when you were, when the microphone was picking you up clearly, it was perfect. And then when you turn your head or whatever, um, it's very difficult.
Yep, I'll definitely talk to IT.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, uh, a motion to adjourn? Who made the motion?
Commissioner Fox.
Okay, Mr. Fox made the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We stand adjourned at eight thirteen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a great night.